No, you can do that. Good evening and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Monday, March 12th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please call roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Neme?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Stainange?
Here.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protam DePietro?
Here.
Mayor Kivala?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ryan, support by Commissioner DePietro. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? I don't have any announcements for tonight, so we're going to roll right into our busy agenda. First up, we've got a presentation for the K-9 unit Nero and Sergeant Munger by Police Chief Mike Angeli. So if we could get the retired hound up front?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked the Commission to take a moment tonight to recognize the retirement of our K-9 unit Nero. Actually, the dog is just retiring, his handler isn't, even though he looks like he should. Nero, I'm just going to take a minute here. Nero is a nine-year-old Belgian Malinois. He was born in Belgium and on January 1st in 2003. He came to us on August 9th on 2004. Since that time, he's had about 360 hours of initial training and had 16 hours additional training every month, which totaled over 1,500 hours for his career. He's trained in drug, people, article, and personal searches. He can detect five different drugs, so if any of our hole-in tonight, I would notice if you want to just wander out. Heroin, cocaine, marijuana, ecstasy, and meth, which is one of our more newer problems. He's a widely-used animal. He's been all over the county. We share him with all the other departments whenever he's requested. He's been involved in over 900 responses in his career since 2004, which includes everything from looking for people, missing or otherwise, drug searches predominantly, and articles and other things like that. So, and I think if you've noticed him around here at the beginning of this meeting, one of his most enduring qualities is his ability to sit here and chew on his Kong and not be disturbed or threatened by people. He's probably one of the most friendly police dogs I've ever met, which has made him a very good fit for our police department. And you may be able also to tell that he is, at the end of his career, he's ill, he's terminally ill, and we've had to make a decision to retire him. And through the graciousness of the city manager and the Commission, we've begun the process of replacing Nero with younger animals, actually two. So, tonight's night, on this evening, I've asked the Commission to recognize Nero for his service to the community and ask the mayor to present Marty Munger, Sergeant Munger, his handler, with a plaque recognizing that achievement.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief. So what we have here is a beautiful plaque that will hang in City Hall by the Police Department forever, presented to K-9 Nero in recognition of eight years of dedicated and loyal service to the Marquette City Police Department and to the community of Marquette, 2004 to 2012. So Marty, on behalf of the Commission, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
And you get to share in that as well. So, if you want to say a few words, I know there's plans for a couple more dogs coming.
Yes, there is plans for a couple more dogs to be coming, and that's in the near future here, probably being placed by June 2nd. And I'd also like to publicly thank everybody for all their support with the dog and the K-9 program, especially the City of Marquette and Police Department and all the members. So, thank you very much.
All right. Our next presentation is another state championship team. Freddie, yeah, if you want to usher the young ladies in. The Marquette U-19 hockey team is here tonight to be recognized for bringing yet another state championship to Marquette, so... You know, this is part of the job I really love, and it sure seems like we get to do this a lot, welcoming state champions here. So, maybe Larry, do you want to come up and maybe say a few words about the team and how they got here? I know they swept the last tournament, I believe, and were down three goals, I understand, in the first, or in the last game and came back. So, do you want to talk a little bit about the team?
There's nothing I like better, son. We had a great weekend, the state tournament. It was a long battle to get the state tournament here. We're happy that we were able to bring the state tournament to Marquette, even happier we're able to represent the City of Marquette and bring home a championship and be in front of this group today. We had a pretty good run through the tournament. We won the first game six-nothing, beat the team we were eventually going to play in the final, four-to-one. In our second game, then we beat a really close game with a team from Nagani, two-to-nothing, a team we've had a big rivalry with all year. Then we won our semifinal six-one, and so we were feeling pretty good about our chances going into the last game and proceeded to go down three-to-nothing at the end of the first period. So, we basically had a little talk with the girls between periods, as we worked too hard all year long, 46 games, to let it go down to this. And they came out and got three goals to tie it up within the first six minutes of the second period. So, after that, it was just a great game, and one of our girls was able to score with about two and a half minutes ago. And you could just feel the emotion of this group, just go, you know. And, of course, I was nervous. I thought, we have to close this last two and a half minutes out, or I'll never hear the end of this. But it was a great weekend for us, and we had a very successful year. I challenged this group right from the first parent meeting that we had. I said, "We had a good year last year. You're ready to take the next step," this group. And they dedicated their season to winning the state championship, and I'll be darned if they didn't do it. So, they deserve a lot of credit. It was a sheer will that they managed to put this together. So, thank you very much.
All right. Well, team, what we've got here is a certificate of appreciation presented to Country Inn and Suites Girls U-19 Hockey Team, 2012 MAHA Tier Two Regional State Champions. So, this is a team certificate, and inside this envelope is a certificate for everyone on the team, including the coaches. So, again, congratulations, and we're very proud of you. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, next up, a presentation, Police Fire Pension Board presentation by Chairman Steve Snort. So, tough act to follow, Steve, sorry.
Well, good evening. I'm Steve Snort, for those that don't know me. And I'm the chairman of the Marquette Police Fire Pension. And I'm here tonight to give a report to the Commission about our pension. Basically, back in April 5th, 1965, the citizens of Marquette voted to establish a pension and retirement system for the police and fire. This was pursuant to Public Act 345 of 1937. Act 345 provides for the establishment, maintenance, and administration of the retirement system for the benefit of the fire and police department personnel and their families. This provision of the act provides that the retirement system is to be financed through member contributions and city contributions. A little background on our pension. I'm a member of the Police Department and have been on the pension board since 2002, about 10 years. Kurt Vogler is a secretary on the board. Kurt, want to stand up real quick? Kurt is a member of the Fire Department and is on the board, and has been on the board since November of last year. Diane Giddens is the City Treasurer, and she is also on the board. She's not here tonight. John Crete is our vice chair. He's been on the board since April 2008. John is here tonight. And our newest member is Tom Hogan, who's been a member for about a month now. He was just put on the board last month. Both myself and Kurt, as members of the Police Department, are put on the board as a vote of our members. Diane Giddens is the City Treasurer. The act basically calls for the City Treasurer to be on there, and then there's two members at large, which are John and Tom. We meet once a month, the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we meet at 8:30 in the morning. Currently, our pension serves, we have 34 members in the Police Department, 26 in the Fire Department, for a total of 60 active members. We currently have 31 retired police officers, 25 retired Fire Department, three members that are deferred. Basically, that's a police or fire member that has left and has vested their pension. So, we have a total of 119 members that benefit from our pension. As of 12/31 of 2011, our pension was at 24 million, a little over 24 million. We have an actuarial report done every year by Gabriel Roder Smith. And the last time, the last year, our last actuary study, they indicated that our pension is 82% funded and that it was in good shape. Basically, our goals as the pension is obviously to continue to manage and operate the retirement system, ensuring its viability for current and future retirees of the police and fire departments of the City of Marquette. Issues to talk about, we've had issues in the past where we feel very good right now that we actually have five members. We've had issues in the past with filling the trustee positions. And in some ways, it's come because of the city charter and having term limits. It basically says that, you know, a member on the board can serve two, three-year terms. It takes, it's quite a learning curve for us being on the pension. And we've had people on the board, trustees on the board, that would like to continue to serve but have served their time and then have to leave. And then we've had problems filling those. Tom Hogan just came on, but we had a void of about a year and a half of being able to fill a vacancy there. So, that's really been our only problem with it. Wells Fargo basically manages our money, and they also issue the pension checks to all our pensioners besides taking care of all of our investments.
Are there any questions? Any questions? I don't see any. Steve, thank you. Look at a plaque or a certificate or... No, you can borrow Marty's and Nero's plaque.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next up, we've got a presentation on the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee by Chairman Robert Chapman. Welcome, Bob.
Uh-oh. Carl, help. My thing just disappeared. Wait a minute. There we go. Carl is coming to assist me. I always lean to assistance when it comes to computers. I want to make very clear before I start my remarks that I'm here to talk about the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee, not the Presque Isle Marina Advisory Committee. I know that's disappointing to a number of you. Thank you, Carl. I've been encouraged to keep my remarks to five minutes, and I rehearsed and tried to do that, so I'll try and be concise and fairly brief. The committee was established, the Presque Advisory Committee, was established in 1993 by the City Commission to essentially do four things. We're to review and develop recommendations impacting the island park. We're to study and preserve the vitality of ecosystems on the Presque Isle. We're to encourage the maintenance and improvement of facilities on the island and in the park, and to develop minutes, reports, and agendas for committee meetings, and make those reports and minutes available to the public and to the Commission. We have a fairly full committee right now. We recruited a number of people this last year. You see the names of the committee people. We get really, really good support from the Parks and Recreation Division, and I want to stress that to the commissioners. Carl and his staff help us greatly, particularly Doug Smith, who's our liaison person right now. And they're very good about giving us the resources we need and the advice and counsel we need to do what we're supposed to be doing. Accomplishments for the past year. We partnered with the Parks and Recreation Division to develop the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update, incorporating island priorities into that plan. We met twice with Police Chief Belt regarding the waterfront safety program, which got a lot of attention last year, with primary emphasis on Presque Isle waterfront features such as the island break wall, Black Rocks, and the Middle Point Beach area. We developed a rack card brochure that we can hand out to thank supporters of the island, folks who give us money on some of our fundraising occasions and do other good things for our cause. We recruited, I think, probably about four new committee members this last year and worked to get people who are interested in the island and enthusiastic about the park. We worked with the Parks and Rec staff on identifying and eradicating graffiti on the island. We had a couple of instances of graffiti this year, and I called that to the staff's attention, and they immediately took care of it quietly and quickly. And we were pleased with the response to that. And finally, we formed a subcommittee of the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee to develop and implement an island playground project. And I'll give you a little bit more information on that as we move forward here. We have five primary goals for the upcoming year, and all of these goals are included as part of the Parks and Recreation Department's Master Plan Update, and they're all ranked as either higher or medium priority goals. The first on the list is to replace chairs and tables at the island pavilion. The pavilion is one of our primary island income sources. We rent the pavilion a lot. And we have these really nice folding metal chairs, which are the world's most uncomfortable chairs. And we really would like to get some better chairs into that facility to just enhance the experience that people have there and hope that they'll come back and rent it again. So, that's one of our priorities. We also need additional ban shell benches. I'm told that the ban shell benches get transported from ban shell functions to lower harbor functions and back again, and we really need a more adequate supply of benches to be used at the ban shell. So, that's another priority. Then we have the island playground, which is also a high priority. This is going to be, we want this to try and be an accessible playground that kids with all abilities can use. And I'll give you some more information on that again. Also, priority is an entrance sign for the Presque Isle Park. At the present time, there's nothing that tells a visitor when he or she is in the park. There's no signage right now. So, we think that's, although that's a medium priority, we think that's an important thing to get replaced. And finally, we need new restroom facilities closer to the ban shell. There are no restroom facilities close to the ban shell right now, so we would, I hope that we could see some accessible restroom facilities constructed near the ban shell. Issues and discussions, this gets to the new playground. The committee would like to help the city go through the public process that will result in selecting a site, determining a design, meeting funding requirements, and ultimately building a new and better and accessible playground on the island. It's anticipated that the final design will include what we like to refer to as universal design concepts. This means concepts and design features that make it good, easy, and safe for everyone to use this particular facility. And we're committed, the committee's committed, to work on local fundraising to offset local match costs for grant applications. We found a kind of a prototype for this playground at the JW Wells State Park, which is located down south of Escanaba, down near Cedar River, and was proven about seven years ago. This is a kind of a computer-generated drawing of that park, and you can study it for a long time, but it has a lot of activities for young people, and it is basically almost all accessible for somebody who uses a wheelchair. And it does not have a large footprint. It's about a 70-foot diameter circle to contain that whole little unit. This is a picture of the Wells State Park playground. And I don't know if you can see, but right in the middle of that picture is a little gal with a pink outfit on. Gives you kind of an idea of the proportion of that playground. So, you can see that it's not a large facility. So, we're going to propose this as kind of the point of departure for this playground idea and see if we need to fine-tune this a little bit for, to be used at the island. That's my presentation. I don't know how I did on the time. Questions?
Fine. Any questions? I don't think so, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by the Presque Isle Concerned Citizens. All I ask is that anyone, please state your name and address for the record, whoever's going to speak. So, we have that for the record.
Hi, I'm Brenda Kurian. My address is 160 North Bertrand Lake Road, Gwin, Michigan. I'm here today on half of the group we call PIC, basically just stands for Presque Isle Concerned Citizens. Real quickly, does everybody want to stand up, the people that are here to support the marinas? Just kind of just let you know, we've got a pretty big group of people together. Little bit of history is that our group formed in late December as a result of several rumors about the possible closing of Presque Isle Marina. We began with a letter-writing campaign. We received several responses, however, some of them were not very reassuring. So, this caused us to spread the word and expand our committee. We started with seven of us, expanded to 35 people in January. By the beginning of February, we're at 66 and currently are at 72 members on our group. We've been meeting every other week since January 12th, and our goal was to take a proactive approach in looking at viable alternatives to keep the Presque Isle Marina open and to look at alternatives to the current five-phase plan, as some flaws in the current plan had been identified by the city, which temporarily left the project at a standstill. In light of recent directives to the Harbor Advisory Committee by the City Commission, we have shifted our focus slightly. Our goal has now changed to working with the Harbor Advisory Committee to keep the Presque Isle project moving forward. We have been well-received by the Harbor Advisory Committee. They have allowed us to select three representatives from our group to participate in their special meetings. The reps we selected are John Tomchek, Tom Nos, and Tim Hepner. Our group has knowledge and expertise, and after much discussion and research, we believe we have a lot to offer the Harbor Advisory Committee. We have done our homework, and we're continuing to do our homework, and we're continuing to meet regularly. Our group acknowledges that the task is challenging, but the opportunity to be creative is stimulating, and we are determined to see it through. Presque Isle Marina is an important part of our community. I've provided some packets for the Commission members today, and those are just to go through at your own leisure, but a lot of the information that you'll find in there was put together by different members of our group. A few things that we would like you to consider when making future decisions. There has been some discussion of making Presque Isle a fishing marina and reducing slip sizes to accommodate smaller fishing vessels. In our opinion, this would not be a favorable option. As evidenced by what happened at the Cinder Pond last year with the first of the planned annual rate increases, the wait lists for the 24- and 30-foot slips were wiped out. These boats will be the first boats to leave if they feel rates are too high because they are easily trailerable. The convenience of not having to trailer the boat when wanting to go out for the day is only worth so much, and we believe the rates are truly at or beyond the tipping point for several of the smaller boats, where the price they are paying for convenience is no longer justifiable. Another example of this is evidenced by the Lakeview Arena, where the rate increases have not seen a corresponding increase in revenue, but rather a decrease in the number of users. Therefore, we think Presque Isle should not be rebuilt as a fishing marina, as it could potentially mean empty slips. We think it should be rebuilt primarily as a medium and large boat marina. You can fit a small boat in a large slip, but you can't fit a large boat in a small slip. So, those who have invested in larger boats need a place to put them, as trailering large boats is not reasonable or even possible for many of us. And then we've really discussed a lot, the floating piers versus fixed piers. Currently, the floating piers are proposed in the plan. We just want you to give careful consideration to the floating pier system, as we have been researching the pros and cons of the various types of pier construction. And we have found that there is very little cost difference between floating versus fixed systems. found that there is very little cost difference between floating versus fixed systems. Also, the fixed pier systems are sturdier with longer life expectancies. The floating pier systems have higher maintenance requirements. Prescott Isle is sometimes exposed, unlike the Cinder Pond, which is more sheltered, and with a good south wind through the entrance of the Prescott Isle Marina, we have often seen large waves coming into the marina, directly into the marina. Because Prescott Isle is more exposed than Cinder Pond, we also wonder will a floating pier system withstand some of the summer storms like we've had the past few summers? Several of our members have expressed similar views, but I would like to share part of a well-written email that was sent to me by one of our members, Rick Sarason. He wrote, "The fear of not having a marina has made everyone willing to accept an any-kind, any-size, any-service marina, just so we will all have a place to park our boats. It's very understandable, but is it in the best interest of us and the best interest of the city? A bare-bones, low-service, high-gas-price marina will continue to be a burden and lose money. If we just rebuild and keep the same policies we have now, the results will be the same, too. I think we have to build a marina that's not only sufficient for us local boaters, now and in the future, but one that will be an attractive destination for the many boaters of the Great Lakes. Build the nicest marina we can with the funds available. Right now, the transient boaters avoid Marquette marinas like the plague. They have the highest gas prices on the lake, last season even higher than Isle Royal. They have short hours of service and unsure availability of slips. This has made Marquette very unattractive to the boaters. I don't think that the City Commission or the Harbor Advisory Committee realize how many of us boaters there are on Lake Superior and the adjoining waterways. There are 4.3 million registered boaters on the Great Lakes. That's nearly a third of the recreational boats in the United States. Marquette's central location on the south shore gives it a potential to be a go-to destination, almost what we would call a must-stop destination. We have some of the best nearshore fishing on the lake, and we are within 40 miles of the best light-tackle trophy lake trout fishing in the world. We could be the premier boating destination on the south shore. So let's explore the idea of Marquette's marinas being the nicest on the lake, being full-service, open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., enough reasonably-priced slips to accommodate local needs, and enough transient slips consistently available. Try to keep our fuel prices in line with the other marinas and try to just keep good, clean facilities. In the words of Walt Disney and the city of Duluth, Minnesota, "Build it, and they will come." I'm not proposing anything fancy or extravagant, just adequate. I truly believe that a full-service marina that boaters can count on will be a true asset to the city and could be not only self-sustaining, but profitable. If we build as small as possible, cut services, keep raising slip prices, the marinas will continue to be a losing proposition." And I think, you know, that kind of goes to the point that the beauty of Marquette sells itself. We don't need to have anything extravagant, but I really believe that if our marinas are in line with the other marinas with fuel prices and things, that we will bring these boaters in, especially if we start to advertise a little bit more and get that word out there a little bit more. But most importantly, we would like to thank the City Commission. We are very well aware of the complexity of this project and the many challenges and the difficult decisions that you will be facing. We want to express a heartfelt thank you to the City Commission and the Harbor Advisory Committee for your efforts in seeing that this project continues to move forward. Please know that we will continue to work together to support this project and to assist the city in any way that we can to research alternate plans and viable options to get the project moving in the right direction. Boating is our passion, and we would like the enjoyment of boating as we know it to be a part of our community for many years to come, so that our children and grandchildren will also be able to enjoy the beauty of Lake Superior from their home port, right here in beautiful Marquette. Again, we want to thank you for allowing us to express our concerns and for taking them seriously.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're through our presentations. Next is boards and committees, and could I please have Jeremy Pickens and Tessa Matson Hi, Tessa, welcome. So, Tessa is our newest member to the Marquette Housing Commission?
Correct.
So, we have for you a City of Marquette pin to wear. You don't get the T-shirt or the certificate yet till you're done, so... But on behalf of the City Commission, I want to thank you for stepping up. We've had a whole bunch of good people in the last couple of months step up, and you're one of them, so thank you. We're happy to have you. Mr. Pickens, you do, however, earn the T-shirt and the certificate, so we've got a City of Marquette T-shirt for you and a pin, and we have a certificate of appreciation presented to Jeremy Pickens for volunteer effort on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. Jeremy, I know you served as chair on this board for many years, and we're very thankful. You did a fine job, so thank you. You ever have any more free time, let us know, we'll find a place for you. Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we have three appointments here. I'll read off, and then we can take them as a slate or do them one at a time. We've got Emily Langtott, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/112; Robert Mallett, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending 5/3012; Heather Dombrowski, Planning Commission Recommended Appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending 2/1513. What is your pleasure, commissioners? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint Emily Lonto to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1, 2012; Robert Mallett to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending May 30, 2012; and Heather Dombrowski as the Planning Commission Member Appointed to the Boning Port of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15, 2013.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Schneider supports. Any comments, Commissioner Neme?
Just like to thank these citizens for being willing to volunteer on behalf of their city.
Commissioner Schneider, any comments?
No further comments.
All right, any other further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we have one reappointment. Crystal Swanson, Elections Board for a term ending 4/1116. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we reappoint Crystal Swanson to the Election Board for a term ending 4/1116.
All right. Do we have support? Commissioner Neme? Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
Pleased to have her stepping up for a second term.
All right, Commissioner Neme?
I echo those comments. I appreciate Crystal Swanson's being willing to volunteer on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. And again, if anyone would like to speak, I ask that you give your name and address, physical address for the record.
My name is David McCartney. I'm General Manager, Peninsula Fiber Network, 1901 West Ridge Street, Marquette, and I'd like to speak on Agenda Item 3. I believe it's the license.
Yeah, Agenda Item 10. Yep, yep, we've got you. Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Frank Jeffaroto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on Item 12. These are my opinions. City officials in the UP 200 Sled Dog Association are commended for pulling off a successful ceremonial start. They made the best of our fortunate lack of snow, however unfortunate for the race. What a shame, though, that regardless of what's done in Alaska, the start has more impact when the teams head straight into the wilderness. The only other negative impact of the race was the Rio Tinto in bold print across every musher's numbers vest. As a result, I left after the third team, severely let down, having looked so forward to the event for the most of the past 19 years. This board isn't the governing authority for the race. Even so, the event begins and usually ends in our downtown. Neither of the top UP 200 officials had the decency to respond to several polite messages. It is assumed that Rio Tinto is either the largest sponsor and/or they paid for the numbers vests. Marquette citizens are too well aware of the tactic that exploitive companies misuse to gain acceptance in communities that oppose their existence. This company pulled the same stunt with our skateboard park, yet the local municipality and service organizations urged them along, either born yesterday or given in to sick influence. This issue was compounded by the fact that six of you have systematically endorsed every aspect of the mine and the haul route, with your most influential member being a former mining spokesman. We've documented too many risks of mining in this fragile area by a company whose environmental record is allegedly hideous most every place they've been. To no surprise, the DEQ denied our request to hold a County Road 500 meeting in Marquette. They're accused of filtering the audience, a practice similar to how your board loading filters the votes. Your six mining advocates have the details at their fingertips, yet they care less. You even heard the seventh member allege this company's violence against humanity, yet you continue to subject us to your selective hearing, and now UP 200 officials give them the red carpet treatment. Few race enthusiasts knew that such a controversial obscenity would appear on the numbers vests. Who paid for the vests is irrelevant. By next year, you're asked to have the association remove that name, at least from the dog sled teams, or hopefully more of those of us who oppose the mine will boycott the UP 200. The innocence of dog sledding and skateboarding are in such stark contrast to the impact of a sulfide mine. An aerial image of the Eagle Mine Site already proves this point. You all know that Rio means river in Spanish and that Tinto has the sound of tainted or tinted, so when you think of Rio Tinto, envision a river of pollutants making their way to Lake Superior. Think of a tainted river.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Jamie Tomczek, Daybreak Charters, 235 Chocolat Township. Just wanted to thank the commission and the Harbor Advisory for listening to us boaters and being open to our ideas and keeping Prescott Isle Marina open, so again, we appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. You're Malankin in Eight Market Drive. Just a short comment. I would appreciate if the commission would, at some point in time, look at the rules and have people withhold their political agenda and talk on current topics that are in lieu with the city rather than their own political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenkenen. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we will move to the consent agenda. Deputy City Clerk, Chris Hazaras. By the way, welcome, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
If you want to go through the consent agenda, please.
Absolutely. Item A, approve the minutes of the February 21, 2012 commission meeting. B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $1,501,051.56. C, authorize the city to act as fiscal intermediary for the Keweenaw Bay Community KBIC funding of $10,000 for the Women's Center for Crisis Intervention Services. D, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for Keweenaw Bay Community funding for the YMC of Marquette County in the amount of $15,000 to implement a program for at-risk Native Americans. E, authorize the city to act as the fiscal intermediary for KBIC funding of $18,430 for renovations to the Great Lakes Recovery Center's Wright Street Facility for Youth and Adult Residential Substance Abuse Programming. F, confirm the Brownfield Authority's employment and compensation of Sherri Davy as their executive director.
All right, thank you, Chris. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Schneider supports. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
These are all pretty routine items, and I believe they should be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I concur with Commissioner Ryan.
Additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take them in order. I know we've got a couple of people here to speak, but these first couple should go relatively easy, so... First up, under New Business Report and Recommendation from the City Manager regarding MDOT request for property easement for traffic control light at US 41 Front Street and Lake Shore Boulevard. City Clerk, do you want to read the background?
Thank you, sir. Background, the Michigan Department of Transportation will be upgrading the traffic signal at the southeast corner of US 41, Front Street, and Lake Shore Boulevard. This project will require the use of City of Marquette property. The location of this easement is in an area that cannot be developed under city zoning ordinance. The Community Master Plan and Capital Improvements Plan do not identify any future expansion of municipal facilities in this area. All documents have been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. Fiscal effect, MDOT is offering $3,000 for the easement. The city assessor concurs with the offer, and no city resources are required for this easement. Recommendation, approve the easement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve the recommendation, approve the easement, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. All second motion.
All right. Commissioner DePietro, any comments?
Just formality, and all the ducks are in a row, so I don't see no issue with this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
No further comment.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding grant application for bridge maintenance funds. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, two bridges in the city of Marquette have reinforced concrete decks, Lake Shore Boulevard and County Road 550, both spanning the Dead River, which may be subject to failure due to corrosion of the embedded steel reinforcement caused by road salt. One of the most cost-effective means of preventative maintenance is to use a concrete sealer every three to five years, which slows the mitigation of road salt into the concrete and adds years to the structure's useful life. This preventative maintenance has been recommended by staff and is identified in the Capital Improvement Plan. Grant funding for this maintenance is available through MDOT Local Agency Programs Unit. As part of the submittal process, MDOT requires a signed resolution from the municipality recognizing this project. Fiscal effect, cost for the proposed work is $40,000. Grant funding of up to 95% of the construction cost is possible if approved. Grant money would be available in the state fiscal year 2015. The city's portion of the cost would come from the major street fund. Recommendation, approve the city's application for bridge maintenance funds through MDOT 2012 Call for Projects and have the mayor and clerk sign the project resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the city's application for bridge maintenance funds through the MDOT 2012 Call for Projects and have the mayor and clerk sign the project resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any additional?
Well, I think this is very important, preventive maintenance. It's a way to save these structures, to keep them in service longer, and here's an opportunity to get some funding from the state to pay for most of the costs, so I think it makes perfect sense for us to pursue these grant applications.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Every state in the Union has been complaining about the bridges, the lack of maintenance. MDOTs throughout the country seem to be lacking funding to repair bridges, so I feel we're very fortunate at this time to have MDOT come up with this 95% construction cost, so I'll support this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments, questions? I'm going to ask one question of Scott Cambenzi. Scott, earlier, in an earlier meeting on the Capital Improvement Plan, I think there was some money identified or requested for this, or was that something else? And if so... Okay, Dennis? That's right, engineering, never mind.
Okay.
If so, I see this is pegged for 2015. Do we hold off?
No, we won't hold off. We'll still conduct maintenance. Maintenance needs to be performed every three to five years. This is just an opportunity that we caught that we can get ahead of. So next time when it comes up, hopefully we'll be alleviated of 95% of the cost.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding grant of license for Peninsula Fiber Network. City Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Background: Peninsula Fiber Network, PFN LLC, the city's current internet services provider, has applied for a license to run fiber beneath a portion of vacant city-owned land. The affected portion is only the width needed to bore and run fiber. PFN will be responsible for all necessary permits. The fiber will be used to connect one of their private customers in an order to provide egress. A license from the city is being requested. In accordance with the application process, staff members have reviewed the request and recommended approval of the license, with the following conditions offered for consideration. The license shall be for a 36-month period, the same length as our contract with PFN, with an option for renewal. Due to restrictions regarding the previous grant funding on the property, the city cannot receive more revenue than it has spent on the property until June 26, 2013. To date, $11,871 has been spent on the property and no revenue has been received. PFN will also ensure that the fiber can be traced through Miss Dig, and they will provide the city with an as-built location survey after the fiber is installed. Fiscal effect: The city will realize the savings of an additional 9% off of our monthly charges to access internet services with PFN. The exact amount will depend on the level of service selected at the end of the 45-day trial period. Recommendation: Approve a license agreement with PFN in accordance with the recommended conditions. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCartney, you wanted to speak on this issue?
Yes, your honor. First, I'd like to thank Susan for her great effort, and she's a tough negotiator on a contract and license. First of all, your be to that, and I'd like to thank you all for having the confidence in us. So I'm here to answer any questions about the proposed license.
Any questions, Mr. McCartney? I don't think so, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the license agreement with Peninsula Fiber Network in accordance with the recommended conditions.
All right. Do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
I'll second the motion, your honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
This is the organization which is providing the city with a valuable service, and this is an opportunity for them to extend their services and for the city to receive a reduced rate on the services we receive. So it's kind of a win-win situation, as far as I can see it.
Commissioner Neme?
I'd just like to compliment staff. I think this is probably one of the best easements we've had for quite a time. And I appreciate PFN's cooperation in the project.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding professional services agreement with Foley, Baron, and Metzger regarding the Cliffstyle Plant Site. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: The firm of Foley, Baron, and Metzger has been retained by the City of Marquette to provide legal services to the city for the Cliffstyle site project. The firm has been working for the city since 2010, and the most recent professional services agreement, 2011, was extended by staff as there were unspent funds remaining from an agreement period that resulted in a 12-month agreement being extended for an additional three months. Unforeseen circumstances on behalf of the MDEQ pushed the most recent phase of the project further into 2012, and subsequently, an extension of the professional services agreement will be necessary to cover services through a work session to be held with the city commission near the end of this month. Staff recommends an extension be granted for the time period ending April 1, 2012, in the amount of $4,000. Fiscal effect: The city attorney budget includes line item funding for professional contractual services, of which $30,000 was budgeted for the Foley, Baron, and Metzger for fiscal year 1112. The city commission approved a $15,000 contract with Foley, Baron, and Metzger. $14,000 has been expended to date for services rendered. While funding remains available to support the additional effort, the proposed extension is for an amount greater than $3,000, which requires commission approval. Recommendation: Authorize an extension of the current agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. I move that we authorize an extension of the current agreement with Foley, Baron, and Metzger in an amount of $4,000 through April 1, 2012.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse supports. Commissioner Neme, any comments?
I'm glad to see that we're finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with Cliffstyle, and I think this is the full... The attorney services that we provide will be helpful in reaching an end to this project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that, I think, as Commissioner Neme said, hopefully we will be seeing the end of the very long tunnel soon.
Any additional comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund application. City Clerk?
Background: At the November 28, 2011, meeting, the city commission conducted a public hearing and then approved a five-year recreation master plan. Establishing a permanent restroom facility at McCarty's Cove is cited as high priority. The cost for the restroom project is estimated at $120,000. Staff has researched grant options that may offset the city's capital expense. The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund is a funding source that is best suited for this project. City staff is currently working on the MNRTF application. If successful, the grant will fund up to 75% of the project cost with a 25% local match. The local match may be either in-kind or cash contribution. Any local match not being in-kind would require support of the general fund. The application process requires the city commission approve a resolution of commitment attached. The final application is due by April 2, 2012, to meet this year's grant cycle. Fiscal effect: The MNRTF would require a 25% match, could include in-kind or cash. The general fund would be required to provide any cash match. Recommendation: Adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund to construct a permanent restroom facility at McCarty's Cove and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives: Do not submit the grant application.
All right, thank you. Mr. Veritol, you wanted to speak on this issue? Go ahead.
We got Fred writing again. I don't know if it's about...
He listens with his ears. Go ahead.
Yeah, he just doesn't want to listen, I guess, to anything. Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge. These are my opinions. This item listed on your agenda as Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund application is the latest example of not providing an adequate description on the cover sheet. Please indicate in the description that funding for a rest facility is proposed at McCarty's Cove. Another recurring issue concerning this item is the absence of a site plan or a conceptual drawing. Although it may be premature to provide one for the restrooms at this early juncture, it's necessary to remind you that over the years, city staff has increasingly neglected to include necessary site plans in your agenda packets. Just some food for thought as this moves along. We're long aware of the need for working restrooms at McCarty's Cove, and you're also aware that we're running out of space. McCarty's Cove, as well as other city parks, are becoming so cluttered with amenities that the qualities of what brings us there to begin with are diminishing. Quite honestly, the existing two-stall setup was adequate when you were able to maintain both stalls. The current setup offers privacy, security, and occupies a small footprint. Please, in your discussion, give us an idea of where you propose to place this facility and the approximate square footage. Any building on the lakeside of the North Country Trail was advised against by the Lake Shore Task Force, and the lilac hedge offers both historic and aesthetic values. You are reminded that roughly 11 years ago, the maintenance superintendent assigned somebody with no knowledge of horticulture to show 60 Boy Scouts how not only to damage a century-old lilac hedge, but how to kill every single transplant that they attempted to establish. The damage remains evident to this day. The hedge is dear to many of us and was already compromised for the existing restrooms. Should larger restrooms be deemed necessary, let us look at the possibility of locating them where the North Country Trail takes its right-angle turn, just east of the south end of the lilac hedge. Then reroute the trail northeast of its current location. This way, the building wouldn't obstruct the lake view from the trail, and would be most convenient for the public to access. And I must apologize for not thinking of maybe providing you a little bit better of a description until I was in my seat, so it's not very neatly drawn. And of course, I'm not a land use expert, so this is just an idea for you. Okay, this page faces north. Here we see the lilac hedge with the restroom facility as it is today. Here's the playground. Here's the sand dunes into the east of that, the lakes. And here is the parking lot. And the trail comes up from the south, comes in like so, and then heads straight north from there. So the proposed location that I'm talking about, if you don't feel that we can get by with the two stalls as is, would be to put the facility roughly where that star is, and then to reroute the trail roughly where those arrows are, so the lake won't be obscured from the trail. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we adopt a resolution of commitment and support an application for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund to construct a permanent restroom facility at McCarty's Cove and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro, seconds. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, my support is based on need, and I think we certainly want to know more about what the structure will look like and where it will be located. But I think it's important to go forward on a timely basis with the application, since they're due by April 2. But I think we made a decision last year to adopt the recommendations of the Waterfront Safety Task Force, which tended to move people away from picnic rocks, to a large degree for swimming is concerned, and down to McCarty's Cove. And I think if we're going to do that, we have to provide basic restroom facilities. You know, if you're a parent, or an adult, or whoever you happen to be there, if we want people in that area and using the area, then we certainly have to have restroom facilities. And this is a way the city can accomplish that, hopefully, with funding from the state of Michigan.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, your honor. If I may, could I ask Carl to kind of give us an idea of where the restrooms would be put?
Well, first off, this agenda supplements strictly for the application period, and certainly we'll be working on site plans and design work subsequently. This just affords the commission the ability to fund a facility that's in a master plan. And as you know, last summer, the restroom facility at McCarty's Cove was partially failed and was not able to be repaired. So this gives the commission the ability to make those decisions. As far as the location of that facility, that will be determined based upon utility layout and the most cost-effective option that the city will have. Most likely, it'll be close to where the facility is currently, where the facility that we've had. But that will be determined at a later date.
But the site that the last gentleman at the lectern had talked about, would that be feasible also?
I think we'll, you know, we'll have staff and engineering look at all the options and bring something back to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. I'd just like to commend the city manager and staff for applying for this grant. We just talked about this during our recent capital budget session, and they promised that there may be sources of funding to accomplish this project. I'm real pleased to see that they got right on it and we're moving forward with it.
Commissioner Stenaj?
Thank you, your honor. I got a question for Carl as well. You knew this was coming. Although, as Commissioner Neme points out, we just talked about this, as is usually the case, our timing is either fast-track or poor, based on state budget issues or grant application deadlines and so forth. My question, I guess, is by submitting this application, does this in any way formally commit us to fund this project, no matter what?
This is merely an application that will allow you to make a decision down the line. Certainly, you won't know if this is funded until later on this summer.
Understood.
And you'll have that opportunity to make the decision at that time.
All right, thank you.
Any additional comments? Call the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, report and recommendation from the city manager, UP Community Rowing Club. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: For the previous three years, the UP Community Rowing Club, UPCRC, has contracted through the city for use of city-owned property adjacent to Lake Superior and Parcel III at Founder's Landing for storage of their trailer and rowing shells. The length of prepared agreement is from May 1, 2012, through November 1, 2012. The city attorney has prepared the lease agreement, which meets the group's needs. The parties expect the UPCRC will utilize 556 square feet at a rate of 75 cents per square foot for a total lease amount of $417 for the term of the lease. UPCRC will be required to provide the city with the current certificate of insurance, as outlined in the attached lease, prior to any activity occurring. Fiscal effect: The city will realize $417 of revenue. Recommendation: Approve the lease agreement between the city and the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club, Inc., for the period of May 1, 2012, through November 1, 2012, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the lease agreement between the city and the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club for the period of May 1, 2012, through November 1, 2012, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Schneider supports. Commissioner Stonehouse, comments?
I... Well, only that we've had certainly a great, I think, experience with this particular group. They're wonderful. They see in the harbor. They're doing a great job, I think, of showing how the waterfront and the lakefront can be effectively used. And this is, I think, a situation where everybody will gain from it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Only to echo Commissioner Stonehouse's comments, I think it's a great addition to our community and happy to lease the space to them.
All right. Any other comments?
I have one question for the city manager. A while back, we were trying to negotiate a lease that kind of opened up all the different leases that we have and the different amounts that we charge. And can you give a little background on this lease? It's a relatively low-cost lease, and I'm not suggesting that we increase it, but just background with maybe the space, if someone is wondering why it seems cheap.
Well, thank you, your honor. And I'll invite Community Services Director Zugger to add in, if I get this wrong. But this is essentially a renewal of a lease that's been entered into with the city within the last couple of years. It's a lease literally to use unimproved ground down by Gaines Rock, near the new Founder's Landing development. It allows them to store their skulls on the beach during their rowing season. There's no use of any other city facilities or anything else implied in the contract. So it's about the closest thing to a bare-bones lease that we have here in the city, short of something like what you saw with the license that we voted recently here with PFN.
Okay, thank you. And again, the only reason I bring that up is 75 cents per square foot. If someone's sitting back wondering why, I'm certainly not advocating raising it. I think the value we get in this community with this club is great. You know, we all love seeing a moat there, so. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a point of comment, if I can. Actually, 75 cents per square foot is exactly what we charge for the storage of a boat over the winter in Matson Park, too. So perhaps there's some real synergy there.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding tree planting services. City Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Background: The city annually budgets $5,000 under major streets and $10,000 under local streets for contractual planting of trees in the city right of way. The city gave public notice and solicited bids from 13 vendors for tree planting services, which consist of...
services, which consist of supplying and planting nursery stock on street rights-of-way and other city property locations. The bids were opened on February 8th, 2012. Low bidder, RRR Lawn and Landscape of Grand Rapids, Michigan, has indicated that they are unwilling to undertake the contract at the price's bid. Second low bidder, A Jacobson Landscaping of Gwin, Michigan, has supplied and planted nursery stock as a subcontractor on several city street reconstruction projects and has performed said work to specifications. Approximately fifty-five trees will be planted under this contract with the following priorities: addressing adjacent property owner requests at various residential locations, replacing recently removed large but declining established trees, introducing trees into areas currently devoid of lacking. Fiscal effect, a total of $15,000 for contractual t, tree planting is budgeted in the major and local street funds. Recommendation, award the bid for tree planting services to A Jacobson Landscaping of Gwin, Michigan, for the unit price is quoted being the lowest, best bid on a comparative analysis of price and meeting specifications. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. I move that we award the bid for tree planting services to A Jacobson Landscaping of Gwin, Michigan, for the unit price is quoted being the lowest, best bid on a comparative analysis of pricing and meeting specifications.
All right. Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Right, Commissioner Neme, anything to add?
Well, I think we need the trees and, and, uh, it's nice to see a, a local market county vendor get the contract.
All right. Commissioner Schneider?
No, just agree with Commissioner Neme. It's always good to see more trees being planted in our city.
Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one, uh, number fifteen, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding BP 1206 Large Water Meter Testing and Repair.
Thank you, mayor. Background, based on the water supply contract between the city and Market Township, independent testing of the boundary water meters takes place each year. The American Waterworks Association standards recommend annual calibration checks to minimize calibration errors and ensure all meters are accurately registering usage. Invitations were mailed to seven testing firms and one valid bid was received. A second bid was received after the bid opening and a third firm declined a bid. The bid comparison and a list of the meters proposed for testing are attached. Fiscal effects, a total of $7,500 has been allocated in the current water fund budget to perform this work. Recommendation, award the bid for Large Water Meter Testing Repair to Vanguard Utility Service of Owensboro, Kentucky, at the unit price's bid. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I, uh, motion to award the bid for Large Water Meter Testing and Repair to Vanguard Utility Service of Owensboro, Kentucky, at the unit price's bid.
Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
Only a question, um, was this the same company did it last year, too?
No, it is not.
Nothing further, thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro, any comments?
Uh, nothing, your honor.
Thank you. Anything additional? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that gets us through our agenda. We are on to public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. And again, if you could, uh, state your name and physical address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Doug Kitchell, and I live at 228 West Crescent Street, here in Marquette. Uh, can you hear me okay through this? Okay. Uh, I came, uh, this evening to show my support for what they call PIC, P-I-C-C, very fond of, uh, Prescott Marina, and, uh, I hope to see that project, uh, come to what, you know, a nice ending. Uh, but, that being said, I am gonna choose to spend my time speaking about something else this evening that, uh, with the nice weather has really become problematic, uh, for myself and, uh, my family. Uh, I constantly have a hard time crossing the road, uh, throughout the city of Marquette. No one seems to care about pedestrian right-of-way. Uh, I, today was running, for example, I have a four-mile run that takes me along the bike path, uh, up to the harbor and back through campus and, uh, cross Fourth Street and Third Street, and, uh, I'm always crossing on crosswalks, trying to with my seven-month-old daughter and my dog. And, uh, it could be a Marktran bus, it could be, uh, any individual, I could be a ninety-five-year-old woman in pouring rain or in the middle of a snowstorm, and for no apparent reason, uh, these folks choose not to stop, uh, for individuals on a crosswalk. Now, I might be more sensitive to this. I grew up in Vermont where, uh, pedestrians do have the right-of-way, and no one would ever dare not stop for, uh, a pedestrian at a crosswalk. I'm not talking about jaywalking, I'm talking about designated crosswalks. Um, I also went to school in Colorado and Boulder. I don't know if any of you folks have ever been there, but there's a large campus, much larger than this one, but it's in the middle of a community, and there's designated crosswalks, and people would be like stopping on forty-one for pedestrians. So it's a problem for me. I, it may be a problem for other citizens in the Marquette area. Um, I think it sends, well, there's many problems in my eye. One, obviously, is danger. I think someone could be, maybe perhaps feel uncomfortable biking on the street for, uh, aggressive car behavior, so maybe they choose to bike on the sidewalk, and then someone's coming out of a, uh, you know, storefront and gets clipped by a bicyclist. Another problem, obviously, is young children running into the streets on crosswalks, maybe they don't look both way, and a vehicle who has been conditioned not to stop for individuals, uh, could hit this person. I fear for that for my own children. Uh, another problem, I think, is just as important, is I think it sends the wrong message to folks who are trying to frequent the downtown area, the village area. People are trying to simply walk across, uh, you know, uh, Lakeshore Boulevard to go to the beach or, uh, just enjoy the area. I feel like this community really needs to make an effort to take back their pedestrian right-of-way. I don't know if we've ever had it, uh, perhaps the, uh, chief of police knows the laws, maybe pedestrians don't have the right-of-way. This is just an assumption that individuals standing in the rain, uh, were at a disadvantage to those warm and toasty in their vehicles. So with that in mind, uh, I think, uh, a logical, uh, progression would be, uh, education. I remember when the, uh, snowplow regulation, the winter ban came, there was a large educational movement, law stuff in the newspapers, making people aware that you can no longer park on the streets during the evening. And then there was enforcement to match that. I received a ticket myself one time, and that was the last time I ever parked on the street. It was an accident, but I certainly have not forgotten since. Uh, with that in mind, it seems like, uh, if there is some sort of a law that would allow or force people to stop at crosswalks for pedestrians, perhaps, uh, the police department, uh, could begin to enforce that after the community has been made aware that they were going to do that. Uh, that would be my recommendation, and I am concerned, uh, for the image we're, uh, presenting to pedestrians. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Tim Hepner from 313 County Road 510 in Nagone. I would just like to thank the commission for hearing us this evening. I am also a member of, uh, P-I-C-C, Prescott Concern Citizens. Uh, one thing I did want to bring up through the committee and, uh, through to the commission is that we are members from all over Marquette County, not strictly the city. And, uh, something I wanted you to focus on also is that as we come into the city to spend time in our marina, that's what we call it, our marina, as we come in to spend time in our marina, the funds we bring into the city, uh, local businesses, um, shopping, picking up fuel, picking up supplies for our boats, uh, meals that we have, that's all funding that we bring into the city, and part of that is because the marina is here. So I just wanted to let you focus on that for a second, and thank you.
Hey, Jeffardo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. This comment was intended for a February 28th meeting that you held a week early on account of President's Day. These are my opinions. Just prior to our January 30th meeting, as I left the chamber to freshen up, Charter Review Commissioner Mike Coyne stood three feet outside the door, hidden from my view. As I rounded the open door, his face unavoidably came within two feet of mine. Our eyes locked for one of the two seconds it took to pass him. Two minutes later, unaware of any problem, I noticed Coyne standing a half-foot from me at the bathroom sink. He'd literally walked over fifty feet for the sole purpose of confronting me. He appeared livid. He commenced to call me a little s-word for allegedly sneering at him, and that the next time I sneered at him, something would happen to me, but he declined to divulge what, only that something would happen in no uncertain terms, which he repeated three times with soft but threatening intonation. I wasn't aware of my facial expression outside the chamber. What Coyne saw was a spontaneous reaction to finding myself face-to-face with an adversary. No interaction with him was planned or intended. Chief Angeli later spoke privately to Coyne and assumingly put the, any idea of a threat to rest. However, this is my second uncalled-for abuse from a commissioner in seven weeks. After the December 12th meeting, Mr. Saint Ange used the same expletive against me over fifteen times, half of it in the presence of commission and staff. You further heard Dave propose to take the issue outside, where he followed me and shouted, "Where are you going?" His threat wasn't as serious as Coyne's, however, the pattern of abuse is evident. Certain officials simply cannot keep cool. The same is true of Mr. Stonehouse after a 2011 meeting, when he was caught exaggerating for a third time. Those allegations being his exaggeration of boating incidents at each harbor and for my writing and for writing unrelated matter during citizen comment. He refused to address any of the above. A fourth incident occurred last January 9th regarding County Road 595, when Fed asserted that all but the southern three miles of the road are already there. This is yet another example of a commissioner using a truth to interject a mistruth. The more accurate truth is that the road's construction would impact every mile of its length with the widening of the corridor, the paving, the traffic volume, the introduction of non-native species, and the tremendous insurgents that increased access promotes, all implications that he chose to divert our attention from. Following our February 13th meeting, two appalled citizens asked me to review two separate closing comments. First came Mr. Ryan's comment that he, quote, "Isn't really concerned with fifty years in the future, but he is concerned about right now." His statement was an apparent response to another member's earlier comment against the McCullin extension. Most everyone who heard Mr. Ryan's comment seeks his explanation. This misstatement seemed so out of line that he's due an opportunity to clarify himself. We all say things on occasion that we wish we'd stated more clearly. To occupy these seats, you're expected to have rudimentary understandings of land use, parliamentary procedure, and vision into the future, qualities that the majority of members have not possessed over the fa, past thirteen years. This lack of vision explains the hodgepodge of development that's prevailed for decades with too many examples on record. So Mr. Ryan is asked to explain himself. A second citizen complained of Mr. Keeble's insulting innuendo in his closing comment, quote, "Boy, it seems like there's something missing from the meeting tonight. I just can't put my finger on it." John's comment was not only obnoxious, but it's also untruthful because he knew full well what he said he couldn't put his finger on. The issue isn't so much his reference to me, but is his mockery of a citizen to whom he lacks the guts to address the specific comments of. Like the rest of you, when you know you're beaten, you answer with silence.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the city commissioner comments. Uh, we'll start on my left. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, I guess I'd just like to ask the police chief, uh, um, the comments that Mr. Kitchell made, what are pedestrians' rights, our rights, and what are drivers' responsibilities regarding crosswalks?
Sure. Um, pedestrians in Michigan have no right, uh, at unsigned crosswalks. Um, the only place they have a right-of-way is at the signed intersections such as, uh, stop-and-go lights where you have, uh, walk and don't walk and things like that. Any other intersections, even though you might be in a crosswalk, the vehicles have the right-of-way.
That's all, have your honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, since Commissioner Neme had asked the question that, uh, I was going to ask, I guess I'm kind of curious what we can do as a city to identify if something is a crosswalk, um, you know, how pedestrians can have the right-of-way there, what kind of ordinances we can put in place and, and maybe a PR campaign. Because I've been in cities, and Arbor being one in Michigan, that, that has similar laws. And growing up in California, it's the same. You step into a, you step into a designated, um, crosswalk with the white stripes, and cars are required to stop, and it's, it's pretty nice. And we've got a very pedestrian, non-motorized, uh, community. It'd be good to see something like that in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Saint Ange?
Thank you, your honor. For those who are not aware, uh, the commission is, um, kind of knee-deep in, uh, our budget process for, uh, for the next fiscal year. And, um, we've had some meetings up to this point in time and have plenty more yet to There are a number of just points of discussion that the commission has actively debated with regard to the budget process, uh, most importantly being revenue or loss of revenue. As many of you know, there has been wide speculation with regard to a number of main tax-paying entities which may choose to leave our fair city at some point in time, that being Prescott Power Plant, but the other being, uh, Market General Hospital and the, um, perception, if you will, that possibly with some kind of transaction, that, uh, the hospital property may come back onto the tax rolls. I'm gonna make a statement that it's more my hope, 'cause I can't, I certainly can't bind this commission or any future commissions with regard to how it chooses to spend its money. Uh, I have been a strong advocate of trying to maintain some level of fiscal responsibility since I've been in the commission for the last two and a half years. And, and I'm, I'm speculating to some degree because I don't have all the facts, but based on what I've read in the press, uh, if the MGH sale does go through as, um, as has been reported, uh, we as a community, again, as reported, stand to gain a couple million dollars, if not more, with regard to increased tax revenue on an annual basis. If this holds true, that's certainly great for us as a community. My hope is that we exercise some fiscal restraint with regard to that windfall and how we go about spending that windfall. There will be a notion, as there always is when you're sitting up on this side of the table, to, um, spend every dime you can, and, uh, that keeps everybody happy. And, um, yeah, as has been pointed out, it, uh, allows us to, uh, to make decisions that are more politically oriented than they may be fiscally oriented. I'm hoping that if this windfall does come our way, that we use some prudence with regard to how we, how we spend it going forward. I would love to see us, my hope would be that we, as a community, would choose to, um, to not increase our spending just because we have more money available to us, but in fact, maybe pay down the debt that we already have for monies that we've already spent that we didn't have money for. I realize this may, I, I realize this is a little premature with regard to making the comment, but I wanted to put it out into the community so that the community can start to have an active dialogue as to how it wishes to proceed with, um, with, with how this money may come to us, and then how we prepare ourselves for other things that may adversely impact our revenue stream in the future. I hear countless, uh, discussions from, from people all over the city of Marquette, the U.P., as well as outside of our geographic area with regard to- well as outside of our geographic area with regard to some of the collective frustrations we have with things that happen at the federal level, things that happen at the state level with regard to debt. My contention is that we have similar issues with regard to debt here in our own community. It may not be at the same level, obviously, that we may be facing in other more complex governmental entities, but nonetheless, it's a lot for this community. And we are only going to be as good as certainly how we invest in our community, but you can invest with no recourse. You have to invest wisely, and you need to make sure that you live within your means. So my hope, again, is that if this does come to fruition, that we make a decision to live within our means and not go off and spending that money on things that we could probably live without. Just an opinion from a guy who sits up here two Mondays out of the month, but I hope it starts some conversation within the community as to how we go forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to congratulate Market firefighter EMT Kirk Vogler on his first year within the Market Fire Department. I'd also like to commend the Public Works Department with back-to-back snowstorms that they had between 12 and 23 inches of snow that was very wet, very hard to push, but 24/7 they had the streets cleared up within the next day, even though the schools had been canceled and a lot of businesses had sent employees home. The street crew was out there, so we commend these employees for a job well done. Also, due to the time change at 2:00 AM last Sunday morning of March 11, Market Fire Department recommends that residents also change their smoke alarm batteries, and this is a time to do it when you're changing your clock either forward or backwards. These alarms, smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors provide an early warning and crucial extra seconds to escape. So make sure you take a few seconds to change the batteries in these alarms. And the Marquette residents may also go to Station 1 located at 418 South Third Street, and they can receive one free battery per family, so take advantage of that. And I'd also like to remind everyone of the upcoming Pigs in Heat 29th Anniversary Hockey Game that will be played at the Lakeview Arena on March 14 at 7:00 PM. Tickets are only a dollar, but the proceeds go to the Pigs in Heat Fire Relief Fund in helping families that had experienced a home fire. And if I may, I've been receiving quite a few calls, mostly from senior citizens and other residents on fixed income on their water bills. During the city manager's comment, if he may address this issue, that there was up to like 37 days, maybe 39 days for some of the residents that had gotten their last water bill. Most of them are used to a 30-day period, so when they got that extra seven to nine days, even though the rates had an increase, their bill did, so they were kind of concerned about being able to pay bills on a fixed income. So hopefully, the city manager will be able to address this during his comment, and also if the city manager could announce his next community office hour, state, and location during his comments. And this year, I've been receiving complaints from parents who walk their children to the school bus stop around 8:30 in the morning on Altamont in the Genesee Street intersection areas along Altamont. The parents are observing motorists traveling at a high rate of speed, and with the different hills along Altamont, there is some blind spots, and the parents are pretty concerned about this. So if I could get Chief of Police Mike Angeli to address this, and if he would like to do that this time, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet.
Sure. We try to spread our traffic points around in the morning hours, but that'll be one area that we'll pay special attention to. We'll take care of that problem.
Okay, thank you. I know you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
First off, a quick follow-up to the questions raised by Commissioner Neme and Schneider, maybe to the city attorney. I believe Wisconsin does have a state law where pedestrians are protected in the crosswalk, and as Chief Angeli pointed out, in Michigan, they are not. Is that something that can be handled by local ordinance if we chose to?
I think the law in Michigan is pretty clear that we control our own streets. As long as the regulations are reasonable, we can do what, you know, the community wants to do or the commission wants to do. I mean, as Commissioner Snyder pointed out, in some communities, they do have that crosswalk protection, but that'd really be a city commission decision, I think.
But it's something that could be considered. I guess I would also say to the people that were here tonight, and many still here, about the Prescott Marina, even though we haven't responded to your comments tonight, that's kind of the way we're structured at these meetings. We're not here to debate, but it doesn't mean we're not listening, and I think that's true for everybody sitting up here. That also doesn't mean that it's going to translate into any specific course of action, but I think we're very much aware of the fact that that marina is very special to a number of boaters in this area, and certainly, we're not going to forget that. I continue to believe that the city should have a comprehensive, long-term plan for the harbor and for our marinas encompassing what we have now and where we might be going in the future, but that's an even broader question. But I guess the main point is that we are, you know, we certainly are hearing what you're saying. I guess I would like to comment on the fact that Market General did make a very momentous announcement during the last week. It's planned partnership with Duke LifePoint. You know, until the announcement came out, we were aware of the fact that something was going to happen, but uncertain what it might be, and I think, you know, it gives you reason for possible optimism, but also possible reason for concern. It's nice to retain local ownership, but in the healthcare environment we have today, it's become very difficult for nonprofits to survive. I believe the announcement we heard was very positive. Becoming associated with Duke University and LifePoint Hospitals, I think, is going to be a major step forward for our community. I know there are still many legal issues. The Attorney General of Michigan has special responsibility. Obviously, that's something we want to watch very carefully here in the city, but he has his responsibility to oversee the community's interest when a nonprofit hospital becomes a for-profit institution. Having said that, I think if you look at it, there were many possibilities. We've seen some Upper Peninsula hospitals merge with companies in Wisconsin where it appears the objective is probably to have those patients travel from Michigan to Wisconsin to get their treatment. I think what we have here is the only motivation for Duke LifePoint to come here is because they see opportunity to take something that's already very good and make it better. I think this just portends so much for the future of Marquette as a regional healthcare center, and the investment in Marquette is probably going to be the largest that we have seen in this area in many years, and probably among the largest ever made. So I think this is going to pay dividends in terms of healthcare, but also provide solid economic benefits, not the least of which Commissioner St. Ange mentioned, which is the likelihood of their becoming a tax-paying member of our community. So I think this is a very positive development for Marquette going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Couple of quick things, if I can, on the hospital. I think, again, it's kind of like grabbing a cloud right now because you don't quite know how big this elephant is, you don't know what the elephant's made of, you don't know how it's all going to finally play out. But obviously, the tax side of it can be very considerable, but understand that a considerable part of that tax side is real property tax, or not real property, but personal property tax. And of course, the state is moving very heavily to eliminate personal property tax throughout the state. Right now, the city of Marquette receives about $650,000 of personal property tax from within the city. That, of course, all goes away if the governor has his way. That would have a major impact certainly on hospital personal property, which would be a large part of what that structure would be, which would leave us certainly with the real property side of it, which would be considerable too. But again, until this thing finally lands on the ground and Lansing figures out what it's really going to do with all these issues, this is, you know, something, again, it's like trying to get your arms around the cloud, you just can't quite do it. You can hope only for the best out of all of it. I would comment on Altamont Street and that situation only that I lived up there, and it is amazing to me when the parents are dropping kids off at school that it is a racetrack. And, you know, on one hand, we're concerned with the kids, as we should be walking to school and the whole safety factor, yet we have the parents that should be concerned with that issue that are just charging up and down Altamont and Hampton, and it's just crazy in the morning when that school is coming, rather, opening up. So again, I would commend the chief to put some time in on that. Perhaps a little bit presumptive, too, as we begin to talk about, and what prompted, of course, is the opportunity for a better restroom facility at McCarty's Cove, but as we go in the city and we look at new property being constructed, especially things like that in sensitive areas, it would make an awful lot of sense if we required the structures to come to us in a 3D CAD format. In other words, so we can see it from all angles, we can understand it, what it will be, we can look at the placement of where it would be. And not only would I think that'd be very helpful to the commission, but I think it would be extremely helpful to our citizens who would get a better appreciation for what this elephant is we're going to put somewhere. We certainly have the technology to do that, and I think we should require that of any new construction potential that comes in front of this commission or the planning commission or any other city body. Lastly, I promise, you know, last snow we had, having lived here for a good piece of our lives, I think we all understand that we don't put the shovels away yet, and we'll see what happens. So, you know, don't put your shovel away yet. Hold on to it, winter is not quite done yet, in spite of our magnificent Saturday. Your Honor, it's all yours.
Thank you. Just two quick follow-ups. Nero, glad to see his retirement party tonight, but I really wanted to thank everyone that's contributed. I think we're nearly at our goal, chief, is that correct? Nearly at the goal, and it's all been fundraised. Local individuals have contributed, businesses, service clubs, and the neighboring municipalities have contributed as well, which is great because this dog is used all over the UP and as far as downstate, I believe he's been, hasn't he? So it's a great investment. We know what the drug problems are in this community and others around us, and I think it's critical, and the way people have just stepped up to the plate and donated is very gratifying. And then just another quick shout-out to the Pigs in Heat, which is Wednesday, 7:00 at Lakeview Arena, and I understand the real entertainment's between periods, correct, Mayor Potem?
Yes, Your Honor.
Couple of celebrities, Zamboni drivers sitting up here tonight, so that's all I have. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. First to answer Commissioner DePietro's question about the billing cycle. We had three unfortunate circumstances before this cycle, in January, February, culminating in March. Normally, it's 28- to 32-day billing period. It ended up being about a 37-day billing period this time. A combination of weather and the principal meter reader suffering from some injuries that resulted in having to replace that individual, who then also befell certain health issues, meant that during the last week of the billing cycle, we were unable to put anybody in the field to follow up on that, so we had a delay. So we don't expect that to be a recurring condition. It's just an indication of how thin we are on the bench for meter readers and the consequences on occasion of winter weather here in Marquette. Second, the community office hours this week are going to be on the 14th of March, Wednesday, 10 to 12, in the community conference room in Peter White Public Library on the first floor, and we invite anybody to come out and share their views with us. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned.